Good evening. Welcome to the 1,950th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. We will start tonight's meeting with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Rob Donovan.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. As a regular meeting, this will be a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Wednesday, November 2 of 2022. Ms. Nash, City Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Donovan?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. All members of the council are here tonight. At this time, I will entertain a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of the regular meeting on October 5 of 2022.
So move.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by Toy. Do we have any amendments or comments on the meeting minutes from the council? I see none. Are there any comments on the minutes from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, I'm going to recognize our City Clerk, Ms. Nash, in hopes that her microphone stops making that noise.
Is that mine?
Ms. Nash, I believe you have an election update for us. Is that correct?
I do. I just wanted to give everyone a reminder that we have the general election is scheduled for Tuesday, November 8. The polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 8. Also, if you wish to come in and get an absentee ballot, you can come in anytime, 8:30 to 5:00 o'clock, Monday through Friday, and you can request a ballot over the counter. And we are also open the Saturday prior to the election from, I'm sorry, from 7:30 to 3:30 p.m. So on the Saturday prior to the election, we are open from 7:30 until 3:30 for election purposes only. And every other day, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00, just come on in. We can take care of you and give you a ballot right there over the counter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of your deputy clerks and election workers.
That's not mine.
It's not yours. You've been proven correct. But we want to thank all of the people working on the election and anticipation of all the hard work that's going to go into this. At this time, the council sets aside 30 minutes pursuant to our rules for audience communication. We would like to invite anybody in the audience to line up at either podium at this point. You will have three minutes to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. The council would ask that you direct any comments to me as the Chair of the meeting, and also that we keep the comments cordial and not be of any defamatory nature or anything like that. So with that being said, we'll start the time. The parliamentarian here on council, or excuse me, Mr. McCullough tonight, will be keeping the time. He'll notify you when you have 15 seconds remaining and you have three minutes. Good evening. Tell me your name, please.
Lori Shuck. Over the last couple of city council meetings, there's been a lot of talk about Proposal Three, and some of it has been true and some hasn't. So I just wanted, I just felt I was louder. So I just wanted to address some of these things. I heard Scott say a couple of meetings ago that everybody, people would agree that there's a baby at the moment of conception. And I haven't read that. I was reading through a lot of different resources on the science of embryology, and I've read a lot of things about fertilized eggs, zygotes, embryos, fetus. I never read anything about a baby. Now, they said that there's the genetic material there that can develop into a total human being, but it didn't say that was like a baby at time of conception. And there was another, there's a lot of talk about partial birth abortions and abortions. I think Scott said that there could be abortions all the way to the moment of birth. And 90% of abortions are done within the first trimester, and about 15% of all pregnancies end in miscarriage. So if we talk about partial birth abortions, that's kind of what happens when you miscarry. A woman could be left with tissue inside. You don't want her to die acceptus. So they have to go through and do a DNC, which is another name for an abortion. So that is done. And yeah, it is. So Proposal Three does not contain arbitrary pregnancy termination limits, so there's no like six weeks, 10 weeks, 12 weeks. It's left up to the, it's not left up to the government or religion. It's left up to the science of OBGYN. Proposal Three, it does not contain arbitrary pregnancy termination limits based on, again, personal beliefs or religious. Proposal Three, it does prohibit abortions once a fetus is ready and able to survive and thrive outside the womb, so except if the pregnant person's health is compromised. So it doesn't allow anyone to abort a full-term fetus. Once you deliver that, it's a baby, that would be murder. So that's not in Proposal Three. Proposal Three, it does prevent the state and local governments from interfering with an individual's rights to make their own reproductive decision and protects the healthcare provider from persecution.
15 seconds.
Good, because I'm almost done. So I would hope and encourage people to vote, I didn't know that this was something we could do at city council, but to vote yes on Proposal Three.
Three minutes.
For reproductive freedom.
Thank you. You're all set. Mr. Zalinsik, can you turn that mic this way? I'm just, we're trying to, we're going to try and troubleshoot some of the, I don't know what it is at this point. Good evening, sir. Come on down, tell me your name and address for the record, please.
I hope to get all this straightened out so I can tell. My name is Daryl Smith. I live at 14006 Brookfield. Who's been toying with these things? Oh, not, never mind. Yeah, I printed out a notice that I got on my computer today, and I just want to read some of it. It's called Ride Smart Flex. And it says, "Smart Flex is an easy way to get around in Dearborn, Troy, Claussen, Auburn Hills, Pontiac, Hall Road, and Farmington-Farmington Hills areas. Request to ride any day of the week, and you'll have the flexibility to get where you need and want to go anywhere within these zones. Most rides are only $2, or a maximum of eight based on how far you're traveling. Click on the zone map to see the flex service area." Then, in Dearborn, from 6:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. In Hall Road, from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Troy-Claussen area, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Pontiac-Auburn Hills, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Farmington Hills, Farming, Farmington-Farmington Hills, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Now, I just got this today, but I'm wondering, you know, it sounds like a pretty good deal, but I noticed that Livonia wasn't one of those. So I'm going to do a little bit more research, and I'll give you an update next meeting. But yeah, I think that, in general, I think we're all kind of tired of hate, you know? It's like, I try to be a little bit humorous up here, just because I don't want to grit my teeth and come up here hating people, you know? I don't want to hate people. But I think we can all make Livonia a better place. That's the reason I come here. It's the only reason I come here. I kind of enjoy, you know, our little thing. No, yeah, I really want to do what I can to make the world a better place, but it's a lot easier to try to make Livonia a better place. So yeah, I'm trying my best to find the humor or at least the connectedness among us all. And quite often, like I went to the Women's March on the 23rd of June or whenever that was, and there's a lot of energy around hate, you know? And that doesn't really get us anywhere. So I just wanted to talk about bus rides and good humor, okay? Not the ice cream, though. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional audience communication? If you have intention to speak, I'd ask that you come on up and line up. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name is Jim Taylor, and I live at 10128 Hicks Road over by Ann Arbor Trail. This is actually my second time in front of the council, the first time as a resident. But my wife and I moved here about six years ago. I just want to touch on a couple of things. My primary reason for being here is about the traffic concerns that I have on Ann Arbor Trail, and I'll expand on that in just a minute. But first, before we move to that, I also wanted to, this has been a very contentious political cycle that we're in with these proposals, and it's not going to get any better in the next few years. And so I would like to just make a suggestion to the council that whether it's through a subcommittee or some sort of a gathering of residents and city officials, police department, talk about the signage and your ordinance in regards to that. I just think that there may be some things that we could look at to change that could make it, that would ease some of the tensions of some of the signage that's out there. So, and particularly when we have issues that are as hot as Proposal Three that are out there right now. But I would just like to make that as a suggestion to the board. I'd be more than happy to talk to anyone in the council another time and just have a very cordial conversation and just throw out my ideas and see where it goes with that. But back to the main thing, and that is the road. It was a, it's been a number of months I've seen increased traffic flow because of the I-275 project. Some of the traffic has been from the construction end of it. I did contact the city Public Works Department. They talked to the city engineer or someone in the engineer's office, and they did speak to MDOT. I also made a phone call to MDOT as well. I don't want to see the big cement haulers going down Ann Arbor Trail. You guys just spent a lot of money resurfacing and redoing that street. I want to keep the life cycle of that moving forward. But that seems to have been corrected for the most part. I haven't seen a lot of that. But what I am seeing is the increased traffic and a lot of high speeders on Ann Arbor Trail. And getting back to the whole signage thing, there's more residents putting signs out on their easements saying, "Please, this is not a racetrack. This is a neighborhood," signs of that nature. And so it's a response to what's going on. I've made a couple of calls to the police department. They can do what they can do, but usually these are isolated. I'm not at my house all the time, but I'm seeing it more frequently, and I have concerns. We have a lot of new families with kids moving into our neighborhood.
15 seconds.
And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And just for the record, I'm opposed to Proposal Three. I think it's very badly written, but regardless of how you feel about abortion. But anyways, I'd be more than happy to have a sidebar conversation with any of the councils. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, last call for audience communication at the beginning of the meeting. I see none. Audience communication is closed. At this time, we'll turn to the council. Does anybody on the council have any announcements that they would like to make at this time?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
I actually have several, Mr. Chair. Thank you. The first is, I believe it was last week, the Livonia Police Department unveiled its pink patrol car for the month of October, and it's a reminder that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And it's a really neat car, and I know some have questioned why the police department is involved in doing things like this, and I'll say a few things. Number one, a big part of our police philosophy in Livonia's community policing and having opportunities to have things that the public can relate to and understand and show their concern for the welfare of citizens falls in that. The second thing is, I think it's a great reminder because it's very visible. I don't know who's seen it driving around, but it's, you can't miss it. It's literally a Livonia police car wrapped in a pink and breast cancer awareness and pink ribbons. It's really cool. But I think it's a great reminder to women to not delay getting their annual mammograms and for men to remind the women in their lives to get their annual mammograms and for men to talk to their healthcare providers about their possible risk for breast cancer. And while the majority of breast cancer cases are in women, it's not unheard of in men. As someone who benefited tremendously from cancer that was caught extremely early in a mammogram, it's a really, it's a message that I like to share. I was very, very fortunate that it was caught early. It resulted in minimally invasive and a pretty minimal regimen to be cancer-free. So thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And the Livonia Police Department also is, you probably can't see it, but they're raising funds for breast cancer with these Livonia police to, with a red, a pink ribbon to protect and cure. And you can get those at the Livonia Police Department. The second thing that I had to mention, there was a very horrific accident early last Thursday morning on I-275 near Seven Mile. Someone in a vehicle had a flat tire, and I believe they were going northbound on I-275, and it was early in the morning, about 5:20, and instead of waiting in the vehicle, the occupant decided to get out and try to cross the northbound lanes of traffic, and it ended just tragically and horrifically. And I'm not a police officer. I don't normally give public safety announcements, but I will remind everyone that if your car should become disabled or you, you know, you have a problem, to get over to the side of the road and remain in your vehicle. Do not get out of your vehicle. And even if you don't have a cell phone, you know, chances are that somebody driving by will report it. So do not get out of your, do not get out of your vehicle. And the third thing is a very happy note, and that is the Livonia Community Foundation is having its annual fundraiser on Thursday, October 27, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at One Under. We call it Bubbles and Bourbon. It's actually a wine tasting and lots of nice food for those people that choose not to imbibe. The Community Foundation provides about $40,000 worth of grants every year to Livonia organizations, and the organizations span the spectrum from human services to cultural to education. It's a really fun evening. Tickets are only $50. They can be purchased at the Community Foundation. They can be purchased online or, I believe, at the Chamber of Commerce. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, the DPW Department of Public Works had an open house at their building, and it was awesome. A lot of families were there. There was donuts, there was cider, and it was just a really eye-opening experience to see our new DPW building in action. There's millions and millions of dollars of equipment that the city has at any given time, and the new building is really awesome investment. We're able to keep a lot of these trucks and different mechanical vehicles under wraps, right? It's inside of a building, not sitting outside weathered, so we're able to get a lot longer lifespan out of our vehicles and all the equipment that we purchased. So thank you to the DPW for opening their building to the residents and showing members of city council that that building is doing what city council and the city had intended to do, is to get longer lifespans out of the equipment that we purchased, to cut a grass, to plow the streets, and so on and so forth. Also, the Livonia Police Department had a Faith in Blue event. It was a public event for the community last week. It was a really good time. They had a petting zoo. Councilman McCullough was playing with the sheep. There was food out there, Mission Barbecue had food out there. There's all kinds of games and toys and whatnot, and it's a lot of fun seeing all the families and kids out there hanging out. Just another testament to how great our police department is and the fact that we have the best and most professional officers in the state of Michigan. And I know I'm very fortunate to, as a resident, to have them, and I know that our city is very fortunate as well to have the most professional and the best police department in the state of Michigan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else from the council? I see none. So at this time, as the council president, I will announce that we have an October 19, an Economic Development, Strategic Planning, and Technology Committee meeting to discuss the Green Meat Master Plan and the redevelopment of Plymouth Road. And October 26, we will have a committee of the whole meeting in regards to discussing the NDO and also discussing ways to allow organizations within the city of Livonia to express themselves. And on November 3, we will have not a council meeting, but a Citizens Advisory Committee on Roads meeting to discuss the 2023 road program. Okay? With that being said, at this time, we will move to our scheduled agenda this evening. I'll note that we have reports from the administration, a communication from the Department of Finance dated October 5 regarding quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia ending August 31 of 2022, a communication from the Department of Finance dated October 5 forwarding various financial statements of the city for the month ending in July 31, 2022, and a communication from the Department of Finance dated October 5 forwarding the departmental purchase report for the month ending September 30 of 2022. With that being said, we will start tonight's scheduled agenda. I will note that there is no consent agenda because there was no study meeting preceding this meeting. Item number one is unfinished business. That is a report out of the Finance and Budget Committee meeting of September 21 of 2022 for the proposed budget for the city of Livonia for the fiscal year ending in, ending on November 30 of 2023, and the property tax mileage proposed to be levied to support proposed budget, noting Council Resolution 263-22. And I'll also note that a public hearing was held on October 3 of 2022. Mr. Bart?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, just a report out on that meeting that we had, excuse me, on Wednesday, September 21, which is our annual opportunity, the step in the budget cycle or the council is formally presented with, actually, we're delivered the budget on September 15, but it's an opportunity for us to meet with the administration and go through the details of that budget, which we did. As I typically do, I'll just express some of the highlights that I think, we go through a lot of numbers, but some numbers that I think will be of particular interest to residents. First of all, in that meeting, which convenes at 7:15 p.m., a little bit late due to a conflict that I had, so thanks to the patience of my colleagues. But Lynda Goslin reviewed our 2022 assessment data, and then Mike Slater, our finance director, walked through the highlights of the budget for the bulk of the rest of the evening. A few of the highlights from that is the budget is balanced, maintains a fund balance of 26% of total expenditures, which is considerably beyond the threshold that's considered healthy. Proposed tax reserves, the proposed tax preserves the lowest city tax rate in Wayne County, which is 44% below the average of all Wayne County cities. All property values, residential, commercial, and industrial increased by about 5%. General fund operating revenues as a result have increased as well, as have state shared revenues. Total budgeted positions decreasing by four full-time equivalents in the next budget. The city's required contribution for retiree health insurance will decrease by about 10%. Contributions to the defined benefits plan are expected to increase. Approximately 83% of total expenditures is for wages and benefits. And, sorry, I'm just making a quick note here because I think I have a mistake in the minutes here that I'm going to have to fix. A total of $5.2 million is appropriated for capital expenditures, and included in the roads funding is money to complete the bike path from Curtis Avenue to Rotary Park, which is something that we had discussed at a previous council meeting, and included in the water and sewer budget is $1.6 million for the design of a water storage system. So those are just some of the highlights I thought residents would be particularly interested in. The administration did also request that council consider adding a 1% tax administration fee to property tax bills, which is something that the state of Michigan allows and is done by all but two Wayne County communities. They told us this would equate to a $2.1 million revenue source for Livonia. There was some considerable discussion about this, and at the end, no council member offered a resolution to add that to the tax bills. Councilman Donovan offered a resolution to refer the subject of long-term capital needs of our aging water and sewer infrastructure to the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee. And in response to a previous request by myself, the administration provided council with a plan for city-assigned vehicles denoting which job functions would be eventually converted to stipends. So with that, the committee recommends to refer the subject matter of the long-term capital needs of our aging water and sewer infrastructure to the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee. That was Mr. Donovan's proposal. We also recommend to receive and place on file the preliminary budget documents and to receive and place on file the supplement to the preliminary budget personnel worksheets. This item, as it always does, will remain in committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 9:25 p.m. And, Mr. Chair, I'll just take the liberty for a few more seconds just to express a personal opinion, as I often do, and it's still the same this year. Livonia residents can be very proud to live in a city that handles our finances the way that we do. This council deserves credit. This administration deserves credit. I, I'm a numbers guy. I enjoy digging into the details. I don't know how much my colleagues always appreciate that enjoyment of digging into the details, but I can tell you that I personally looked deeply into this budget, and I'm very, very pleased with where it is and how responsibly the city continues to use its funds by and large. It's not to say that there aren't differences, and there's always going to be differences in how we do some things, but fiscal responsibility is a high level here. We hear that from our auditors every year, and citizens should be proud. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will be moving on. Well, let me ask a question real quick.
Two votes.
Yeah, we need two votes. The way that was reported out, the suggestions that came out of the committee, can you repeat those one by one?
Yes.
And we'll go through a voting process?
Yeah, there's one for the subject matter of long-term capital needs of our aging water and sewer infrastructure to the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee, so, Mr. President, it'd be appropriate for a motion on that. And then the other one, which we don't have the minutes.
Let's stick with that first one first. Do you wish to make that motion, Mr. Bart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Support.
Okay, motion by Donovan, support by Toy. Any comment from the council in regards to this? I see none. Any audience communication in regards to that referral to the committee? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter is approved. That will be referred to the appropriate committee. And, Mr. Bart, what was that second motion?
Yeah, the second would be to approve the budget. And then I'm just making sure that I've got my language correct here. Is the approval of the tax rate something separate?
There's two, you need two votes, one for the tax rate and one for the budget.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you for saving me the looking.
Yeah, the budget is first, and then the tax rate is the second issue, second item.
Thank you. So I would make the motion to approve the budget, Mr. President?
I'll support.
Motion by Bart, support by McCullough. Any comment from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience in regards to the budget? If you'd like to speak to this matter, please come down to the podium. Because this is an agenda item, you have two minutes, not three. You will be notified when there's 15 seconds left. Your name and address, sir?
Yes, my name is Daryl Smith. I live at 14006 Brookfield. I was just hearing Mr. Bart talk about how proud we should be of the wise management of money that the city of Livonia does. And it just struck me as almost humorous as we're struggling with what to do with a building that's so full of mold that it's going to have to be torn down, and I think maybe spending some money in the past to fix roofs and things like that might have been a wise thing to do. That's all.
Okay. If there's no further audience communication, Ms. Nash, please take the vote, offering to approve the budget.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The budget ending on November 30 of 2023 is approved as proposed, and, Mr. Bart, can you introduce us to the rate increase as came out of that committee?
Yeah, so just offer a motion to approve the tax levy of 3.9709 mils for those keeping track at home.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll support.
Okay, that's offered by Councilman Bart, supported by Councilman McCullough. Any comment from the council on that? I see none. Or, excuse me, Mr. Bart?
Yeah, and I said this earlier, but I just want to reiterate it. That tax rate, again, just because I think it's good for Livonia residents to know this, lowest city tax rate in Wayne County, 44% below the average of all Wayne County cities. And I, for one, recently looked because generally cities have higher tax rates than townships, and I was curious, okay, we always trumpet how this is the lowest city tax rate, but let's be honest, some of the surrounding communities or the western communities we're competing against, if you will, for residents are townships, and we actually compare very favorably and even lower than some of those. So while we all would love our tax bills to be lower, I'm sure I feel very comfortable with this tax rate. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any audience communication on that motion to levy the appropriate mils for the budget? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The item is approved. The mils will be levied as required for the budget, and we will move on to item number two of unfinished business. That is the proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Emerson Oaks Site Condominium located on the north side of West Chicago Avenue, west of Harrison Avenue, in the northwest quarter of Section Thirty-six. This is to determine necessity. A public hearing was held on October third of 2022. Do I have a motion, council?
I'll make a motion for that.
Motion, motion to approve by Mr. Morgan, motion to support by Mr. Barr. Mr. Donavich, do you have anything to say? I thought you indicated you did. Any other comment from the council? I see none. Any audience communication on item number two? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote to determine necessity.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item three is approved, excuse me, item number two is approved. Moving on to item number three, is a proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Linden Park Site Condominium located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Inkster and Harrison Avenue, in the southeast quarter of Section Twenty-four. This is again to determine necessity. A public hearing was held on October third of 2022. Do I have a motion, council?
So moved. Approval of the, of the assessment.
Support.
An approving motion by McIntyre, support by McCullough. Any comment from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, President Jolly?
Aye. Item three is approved. Moving on to item number four, this is a proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Heinz Place Site Condominium located on the west side of Jug Handle between Plymouth and Edward Heinz Drive, in the southeast quarter of Section Thirty, again to determine necessity. A public hearing was held on October third of 2022. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Approving from Toy, support from Barr. Any comment from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number four is also approved. Item number five is the proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Grand Reserve Site Condominium located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Blue Skies and Nola Avenue, in the southeast quarter of Section Nineteen, to determine necessity. Again, a public hearing was held on October third of 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval. Support.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, and I think Mr. Morgan indicated support before I heard it, although we're gonna give it to him. Any comment from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience on number five? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?